Okay, we'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order, and if able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Pape.
Here.
Councilmember Cheveta.
Here.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Hans.
Here.
Councilmember Caldol.
Here.
Councilmember Leahy.
Here.
Councilmember Ryder.
Here.
Councilmember Silvers.
Here.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. In light of one of the proclamations we're giving later this evening, plus I probably was remiss at last council meeting, but I wanted to talk a little bit about Kennesaw, Missouri firefighter, paramedic Graham Hoffman, who passed away on April 27th in the line of duty. As you might recall, and probably you saw it on TV, but he was stabbed in the heart while he was rendering care in the back of an ambulance. And it's tragic for first responders to lose a life in the line of duty, but when somebody's murdered, it's just horrific. So if you would, I'd like to give thirty, thirty seconds or a moment of silence in his honor. Okay, next up here is our public items, and members of the public are encouraged to use this time to make comments about matters that do not appear on the agenda. Comments about items on the regular agenda will be taken up as each item is considered. Please note individuals making public comments be limited to five minutes, and in accordance with governing body rules and procedures, the city reserves the right to refuse public comments that are personal, impertinent, or slanderous. I did have a sign-up sheet here that was out in the hallway, but nobody signed up. But if anybody out there would like to come up to the podium and speak to the council this evening, please raise your hand, I'll call you forward. Okay? Sir, come on forward and give your name and address for the record.
Billy Crone, 6633 Wed Street. I read the agenda last week for this meeting, and what a doozy. Some big items on there. Potential $30 million giveaway, social corporate welfare for our city's largest and most profitable private developer. I'm sure they need that little bit of extra help, guys. Thanks for giving them our tax money, or talking about it this evening. If that were to be divided, the 30 million by the 4,010, 4,100 houses in Merriam roughly, that's about $7,000 per Merriam household, so I really hope it's worth it if we end up giving them that. I no doubt they'll ask for IRBs as well. I know CID is also in the works, a new sales tax. That's interesting, because the last time, last couple of times, we had a sales tax in Merriam, it went to a public vote, but this one won't. It's just a small area of Merriam, but it's still a new sales tax, or tax on sales in that district. What else? Oh, saving downtown, historic downtown Merriam by destroying historic downtown Merriam, potentially. One of those two solutions proposed in the packet by the Corps of Engineers. I was afraid something like that would happen. When a small city like us gets involved at the Army Corps of Engineers, it could just roll right over us. But yeah, you know, there's flood history there, it's a flood zone, and one of the potential solutions is to graze, or raise all the buildings and then throw in two to five feet of soil. I think that's a cure that's worse than the disease, if we lose all of our buildings down there, all of our businesses and the couple residences that are down there. What else? I didn't write down my notes this evening, but those were certainly the big ones, and I don't see the list on the screen, so that'll be all for this evening. Thank you, council.
Thank you, Mr. Crone. Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward at this time? Okay. I see no one else raising their hand, so I'll close out the public portion of the meeting. Next, we will go to consent agenda. All items listed under this heading are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless council members so request, in which case that item may be removed from consent agenda and considered separately. We do have three items this evening. Does anyone on the council wish to have any item removed? Okay, I see nobody wanting anything removed. I would entertain a motion for that. Okay, Mr. Silvers, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that the council approve consent agendas, item one through three.
Okay, we have a motion, and Ms. Yadrich.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Cheveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hans.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldol.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yadrich.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item up this evening would be the mayor's report, and you guys are in for a treat this evening, because I have six proclamations, six. So sit down, buckle up, and let me read these. The first one goes, whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is an annual celebration to recognize and honor the contributions of Jewish Americans who have helped weave the fabric of American society, culture, and, the fabric of American history, culture, and society, and whereas Jewish Americans have created lives for themselves and their families and played indispensable roles in our nation's civic and community life, making valuable contributions to our nation through their leadership and achievements, and whereas the Jewish community continues to be targeted in the United States and is consistently the most likely of all religious groups to be victimized by incidents of hate, and whereas anti-Semitism, including harassment based on actual or perceived Jewish origin, ancestry, ethnicity, identity, affiliation, or faith, remains a persistent and disturbing problem in American society, and whereas Jewish Americans have made crucial contributions to our collective struggle for more than just a fair and just society, leading movements for social justice and working to ensure that the opportunities they have secured are extended to others. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Jewish American Heritage Month, proclaimed on this 12th day of May 2025, Bob Pape, Mayor. And I don't think I have anyone this evening that's receiving this particular proclamation, but we will get that in the archives. Proclamation number two. Okay, whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Merriam Police Department, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, and whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during National Law Enforcement Officers' Memorial Fund's 37th Candlelight Vigil on May 13th, 2025, and whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers' Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, whereas the city of Merriam publicly salutes the services of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. And therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 11th through the 17th, 2025, to be National Police Week, proclaimed on this 12th day of May 2025, Bob Pape, Mayor. And we do have somebody that is going to get to receive this one, so I'll be right after you. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and the members of the Oland Park Fire Department Emergency Medical Services Team are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas they engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has helped fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including response to the acutely ill, injured, and those with chronic health needs, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, dispatchers, paramedics, firefighters, police officers, physicians, nurses, educators, administrators, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 18th through the 24th as National Emergency Medical Services Week. With the EMS theme, we care for everyone. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities, proclaimed on this 12th day of May 2025, Bob Pape, Mayor. And I understand we have EMS chief Angela Caruso, Yanni, I always call you, I always remember yours, Angela, but I want to get you as chief. And I'd like to present this to you, and if you want to have the other chiefs and your EMS providers back there, come forward, we can, we can get you all in the picture.
Do you two want to go in the middle?
Oh, we can come to the middle.
Get us all in here.
Try and get everybody in.
Okay, thank you. Getting closer. Now, I have to admit, I did not know this week was coming on this one. Whereas on May 21st, 1881, the USTA, originally known as the United States National Lawn Tennis Association, was founded in New York City, New York, to create rules and standards for the emergency game of lawn tennis. And whereas the USTA is the nonprofit national governing body for tennis with more than 500,000 members, and it leads the promotion and growth of the sport at every level of play, from beginners to professionals at the U.S. Open. And whereas the USTA proudly partners with local tennis programs to showcase the benefits of tennis and make the sport available to everyone, regardless of age, environment, or ability, through its USTA adaptive grants, and whereas the latest research by the Physical Activity Council shows that more than 25.7 million Americans played tennis in 2024, a 46% increase in participation over 2019, and the highest number of players since the study began in 2007. And whereas by increasing the accessibility of tennis for Merriam residents of all ages and abilities, the USTA has contributed to making our community happier and healthier. And whereas USTA has declared May as National Tennis Month to encourage players and organizations to promote local programs and activities at parks and facilities to showcase tennis and help players find courts and play opportunities in the communities. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as National Tennis Month, proclaimed on this 12th day of May 2025, Bob Pape, Mayor. And I understand we have Rebecca Faulkner Axelrod with the USTA Heart of American Executive Director is here? If you'll come forward, I'll be glad to present this to you. Little known fact that I'll share this evening is I played tennis in high school and a few games at Johnson County Community College before I realized that I could not compete. Okay, next is whereas every day, 125 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 260 are shot and wounded with an average of nearly 19,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun violence than people in other high-income countries, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from those who are a danger to themselves or others, and whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was shot and killed at age 15, and on June 6th, 2025, to recognize her 28th birthday, people across the nations will wear orange in tribute to Hadiya and other victims of gun violence and the loved ones of those whose victims, and honor National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors, we pledge our commandment to do all we can to reduce gun violence across our community. And therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim June 2025 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Month, and I encourage all citizens to support our community's efforts to help prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Claimed on this 12th day of May 2025. And my understanding is, we have Jody in the audience? Okay. Jody is with Moms Demand Action, Yavonter. And I will present this to you, Jody. Can I stand between you two, though?
Absolutely.
You want me to step this way?
Yep.
We're good. I didn't go to the gym, because I knew I had all this walking tonight, so. Last one, but not least, is whereas this marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association with the theme of people, purpose, presence, and whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure facilities and services that are vitally important to the high quality of life and well-being of our residents and visitors of our nation and the city of Merriam, Kansas, whereas the dedicated efforts of public works professionals are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is the public's interest for the residents and visitors in the city of Merriam to learn and understand the importance of public works and public works programs in the community. And whereas in the city of Merriam, I urge all citizens to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety, and quality of life. Now therefore, I, Bob Pape, by the virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of Merriam, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as National Public Works Week, proclaimed on this 12th day of May 2025, Bob Pape, Mayor. And I think Director Comkey will present this one to you, and anybody you want to bring forward. I see some of your people from the audience.
I think we would like all of you public works members to come forward and be recognized.
We're sitting in tiptop shape.
Thank you.
Seems like May is a very busy month, but we actually had to, we only had one meeting this month, so that's why we had so many tonight. Thank you for bearing with me on those. Okay, well, I guess I have to give my official report, don't I? I also, as most of you that have been here before know, I'd like to talk a little bit about the things that I and other council members have done over the last two weeks. So I and several council members and staff attended the ribbon-cutting grand opening at Thirty Hop. There are our newest restaurant at Merriam Grand Station, they got good food and brew over there. I suggest everyone get over there and check it out. I and several council members attended the Tim Murphy Art Gallery opening of the new exhibit. You may have missed out on the good food, but you can still catch the art show. I attended the Oland Park Fire Department retiree breakfast, brought everybody over there up to speed on what's happening in Merriam. I attended the Johnson County Kiwanis Monthly Meeting, and I was presented with my 35-year service award, so I didn't think I was that old, but I guess I have been. Okay, I met with Juliana with the Shine Mission Post, our reporter, and gave her a few thoughts about our new Merriam Marketplace proposed development that will include a grocery store. As always, she did a good job of informing the public of what developments we'll entail and what it means to our community. Thank you, Juliana, for your coverage of Merriam. She diligently sits here at each of our council meetings, reports on the important issues concerning Merriam, so transparency is very important to us, and the more ways that we can communicate to our constituents, the better off we are. So I attended the Johnson County Criminal Advisory Council meeting. In case you didn't know, marijuana, fentanyl, methamphetamine, and heroin are the top four drugs in Johnson County right now that we're combating. Drug deaths are down, which is good for this year over last year, but there were still 64 drug deaths in Johnson County. I and a council member, Mr. Engel, to make tonight's agenda, I and several council, excuse me, several staff, attended the Johnson County Transit Strategic Meeting. The big takeaway for that was the proposed rebranding of the transit program and the addition of fares to that program. Now currently, it's free, but they also did a comparison of our county with other counties around the nation, and changes to the route and the frequencies were discussed, and the plan includes future development as well, and the plan's going to be presented to the county commissioner soon, and the funding strategies were part of that class as well, or that Zoom, Zoom meeting. For the council, if you didn't see in the admin report, they are going to have another one of those, and I see Mr. Engel about getting on that site if you would like to sit in on that and kind of hear that whole program. It's about an hour and 15 minutes or so. That concludes my report. Okay. All right, let's see. Well, looks like the first item up for council items is consider approval of a contract with Malagros Collective to create public art. And there we go. I'll let you talk about that.
Hello. Sorry, I was a little high. Hello, council. I am here to share with you the Public Art Committee's latest project. Let me get this to full screen. All right. During the Public Art Master Plan process, the Public Art Committee established a vision for a future of Merriam where we are identified by arts and culture. We also established values of engagement, community, and beautification. This project that I'm sharing with you tonight meets those vision and values. Also following the master plan, the Public Art Committee selected the parking structure stairs at the Merriam Community Center as the next location for a public art project. This choice was guided by the community survey feedback, where people said that they really wanted to see art on infrastructure and in unexpected places and on the Merriam, around the Merriam Community Center. So we put out a, oh, sorry, I'm forgetting to advance here. There's the stairs, as they currently are in their very gray status. We put out a call for art, for artists, and we received about 190 applications. After a few rounds of review, the Public Art Committee narrowed it down to three semifinalists that created site-specific proposals for our stair project. We shared those proposals with the community for feedback and interviewed those candidates at the April 10th Public Art Committee meeting. The community showed great enthusiasm for the Malagros Collective with their feedback. I measured that in exclamation points on the comments. There was about 50 people that commented, and there was 14 exclamation points for Malagros Collective versus four versus one, so, you know, and a wowzers in there, so, you know, they really liked it. So the committee unanimously selected the Malagros Collective for this project. Their proposal includes murals for both the exterior and interior staircases. The exterior stair design is inspired by our changing Midwestern seasons, and they also included a little shape that references leaves or seeds. They might also include some ceramic tile in this portion of the project. The interior stairs design is also inspired by our native flowers and plants that grow around here. At the top of the mural, there is some little bursts of color with 3D elements. They'll also continue their design across the windows using some vinyl. They plan to engage with the community in several ways for this project. They want to give an artist talk to introduce themselves to the community. They also want to host a couple of workshops and teach their sculpture-making methods using recycled paper and concrete. And then they'd also like to work with local artists or members of the community to create some of those little 3D elements that will be at the top of their project. Minimal maintenance is expected for these murals. The Malagros Collective has done numerous large-scale murals around the country. All three of their references provided really glowing reviews. Several of them have worked, well, some, one of them at least has worked with them multiple times, and another one really wished she had another project to work with them on. They were great collaborators, they've proven to be exceptionally creative, and they were also very successful at navigating bureaucracies that are far more complicated than Merriam, so that's also comforting. Their references also confirmed that they've experienced very minimal maintenance with their mural projects, so that's good news for us. The total contract for this project is $50,000, and it's expected to be completed by October 23rd, which is our birthday, so we'll have another reason to celebrate. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Kreschovia?
Krevosha.
Krevosha. And you know, when I went to the Risha, I was thinking, Assistant to the City Minister, how do you say that? That's her title. It's like, yes.
Yes.
So I do have one question. When you go back to the outdoor stairs, as one who is challenged, shall we say, about depth, and I know that's just a picture, how are we going to be sure that those stairs remain safe for everyone?
That is a primary concern of us. They will certainly have to meet all of the code's requirements and not, that's one of the concerns about the potential for putting tiles on the stairs, so I alerted them to that, so we're highly aware of that potential issue. Their alternative could be just painting on the stairs, but they still hope to find some way to use some sort of ceramic or tile component on the project. This is just a concept at this point, they're very open to collaborating and seeing how we can improve it and make it be the best fit for us, so it could evolve. Like, this may not be the exact end product here.
They haven't done stairs before. I was hoping that maybe, oh, okay.
They have. Yes, one of their hotel projects in Florida was a grand staircase where every single surface of the stairs was covered.
Wow.
It was pretty impressive.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the question's, go ahead, Ms. Men.
I was just going to kind of comment on that. Were you concerned about visual? Just, okay, yeah, and we kind of brought that up a little bit when we interviewed them on the committee, or I said, when the committee interviewed them, they brought that up, and so that was something that they were really willing to, like, work through as they, and obviously staff will need to, like, review it for code and everything, too.
And I know when, when the Kaufman Performing Arts Center first opened, the stairs were all white marble up and down, looked fantastic, amazing, and it wasn't very long before we had to put little strips so that we could see where those stairs were. This would, for me, it's so colorful that I will have to really pay attention.
We will be sure to address that with them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just another comment, since Jason and I are city council liaisons for the committee, as you all know, and I was really impressed by their just, like, collaborative nature, and so I think that the committee also had some concerns with how green this interior staircase is and just that, that heavy saturation, and so they seemed very amenable to kind of working through final design with the committee as part of their process, and they, like, want to live here for a few weeks to complete the project, so they really want to immerse their self in the community, themselves into the community, which I was really impressed by, since they do work all over the country. I was just really excited they wanted to come spend some time here.
Do we have other questions? Okay, well, before we call for a vote on this, thank you for, well, thank you and your committee and also our council people for sitting in on the committee, because and also our councilpeople for sitting in on that committee, because it's, it was a tough decision. I know I did sit on the very last one to sort of see what was being proposed, but, but I think we do have an individual that would like to speak to this item come forward at this time, so you raise your hand, and I recognize you. Name and address for the record.
Billy Crone, 6633. I was present at that art committee meeting as well, and I was going to mention the same thing Stacy did, that there was concern about, it was dizzying, in the words of one of the attendees there, and to mix that with the stairs could be perilous, so just something to consider. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Okay. Well, with that, I would entertain a motion. I'd say maybe one of the committee members, Mr. Rettit?
Mr. Ray, I'd like to make a motion and move that the council approve a contract with Malagros Collective in the amount of $50,000.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Mr. Silvers?
I'd like to second that.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudal.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It looks like next item up this evening is consider addendum to a contract with HNTB. Looks like we got Mr. Engel coming to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Next item on the agenda is consider addendum to a contract with HNTB to complete hydraulic analysis of Upper Turkey Creek. As you are all aware, the Upper Turkey Creek project continues to proceed at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. We are getting close to wrapping up 35% design and getting all of the, well, it won't be all of the answers that we want, but it'll be 35% of them, that to make a decision to move forward either with the Corps or to move forward on our own. The Corps has continued to push forward. We have shared with them that we would like several months to make a decision. Well, we have given them years and years and years to get to where they are. We don't feel compelled to make a decision overnight once they go, here's 35% design. So, we would anticipate getting the 35% at the end of this month, having the summer to talk about the Corps project, what the pros, cons of that, what are other options that might be available to the city, and making a decision by October is what we have shared with them. The item before you tonight is another option. It is not the Corps option. This is, as we have tried to anticipate, what are going to be some of the questions that our residents, some of our questions that our businesses, and just as importantly, some of the questions that you will have as the decision-makers on this may have as we go through exploring the Corps option. One of the things that we feel is important is that the council knows if there are or not other options out there. So, in the effort to try to gain information on that, the city staff entered into a contract in February with HNTB, it was under my purchasing authority, to investigate opportunities to bring just downtown out of the floodplain. As you will recall, the Corps is taking all of Upper Turkey Creek floodplain out, or at least attempting to take all of Upper Turkey Creek out. So, we wanted to see what the options would be just for downtown, also anticipating the cost load of what the Corps project very well could be. Was there a less expensive option to perhaps accomplish half of the things that the Corps aspires to accomplish for maybe half the cost? We didn't know, so that's why we hired HNTB. We hired HNTB also because they are the ones doing a lot of the hydrology work on the Corps, so they have access to the data sets that the Corps has. They also are part of the conversations. They understand where we are with the Corps. They understand the nature of downtown, what are some of the challenges that we'll have in making a decision. So, we have been pleased, working with them in the capacity, in their capacity with the Corps, and in their capacity as independent contractors for this particular agreement. As, as you will see, they came up with two solutions to get historic downtown out of the floodplain. We have one that is called the Full Build, which would be to pull all of historic downtown out of the floodplain. Unfortunately, what that does is that creates negative impacts upstream. By federal regulation, if we make a change to the floodplain that has impacts upstream, we have to mitigate those things, which means we would have to go chase those with berms and walls. It's quite possible, once we run that option to ground, it looks like the Corps project anyway. We don't know, which is why we're here tonight. The other option that they have presented is a no-rise option. That is essentially where you can elevate everything east of Merriam Drive and historic downtown, and that would not have a negative impact up or downstream, so that would not need to be mitigated. What we have asked them to do is fine-tune those, look at some utilities, get us some better cost estimates, and really take us to the next phase so that we know what's realistic and what's not realistic, and we can understand the pros and cons of these options, just like we're going to understand the pros and cons of the Upper Turkey Creek through the Corps project options. So, what is before you tonight is simply an agreement to complete what we're calling Phase Two of this hydraulic analysis of downtown. The ask is for $42,590. The budget that we have for downtown is $142,500. Happy to answer any questions that you may have about this.
Any questions, Mr. Engel? Go ahead, Mr. Leahy.
Currently, what's the Corps' proposed fee or cost to do berms and floodwalls?
Sure. The Corps' current number that has been thrown around in their working budget is $120 million. However, there's a few expensive pieces to that that are not included in that. They are exploring currently the need to move, replace both the Johnson Drive Bridge and the Merriam Drive Bridge. Depending on the options for the Johnson Drive Bridge, that could necessitate the move of Merriam Drive. That might actually have to move to the east and all of the impacts that that would create. So, we are not optimistic that $120 million, nor is the Corps optimistic that $120 million is the right number, but that is the number that is on their, their current working budget. Can I answer your question?
Yes, I just wanted to add, you know, the thing about, we're talking about, you know, $15 million with the property down there and spending $120 to $150 million to protect $15 million of the property. I think it's in our best interest as the city to understand what other options might exist in terms of making downtown, revitalizing downtown, which is what our citizens have told us they want, a new, dramatically different-looking downtown, and just having options on the table before we spend $120 million of taxpayers' money.
Agree. I, we, we'll take note of that. We, we would agree that is why we've started to look in this direction, to see if there are other options again, so the council, there's going to be no option that's a great option. I mean, even the Corps option's going to be disruptive. It's going to be expensive. You're going to buy people out. If you're going to do that, well, this option might replace all properties downtown with a floodplain-free developable plane, but that's something that I agree, the council needs to know that that's an option.
Yeah, I mean, we need the, I, to me, we need the information to make an informed decision about what to do downtown.
Agreed. Thank you for that.
Other questions, Mr. Engel? Okay. This way, go ahead.
Yeah, I've got a couple. I think in the HNTB document, it mentioned something about the hydraulics report being ready potentially tomorrow or later this week. I assume, having worked on similar projects, that it's not ready now.
Yeah, you're going to talk way over my head on that. I'm not here to talk about HNTB.
Okay. Are we, are we going to get, are we going to receive their, you know, reports, et cetera, when it's all done?
Yeah, what, if you approve this tonight, we will have a lot more information to share as part of our conversations with the Corps, yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm happy to try to answer their engineering. I'm just not.
No, I'm just curious about the schedule, because I think it said from the previous contract, like, the report's going to be ready later this week. It's probably not ready now.
Yeah, w- once we, once we hit where we actually had two options as opposed to one option or no option, the schedule stopped. So, they continue to move forward with the Corps work, so, again, that benefits us kind of in a weird way, because they're still actually doing work that they kind of can use and cannibalize for our side, side work. But, yeah, the, the original schedule was paused a month ago whenever we got the report.
Okay, gotcha. And then just one other, just sort of a comment. I've been a part of similar projects where we look at, here's a stream, here's a flooding issue, what can we do to solve it? Sometimes you have to just go to, you know, what's the smallest thing that could potentially solve this, which would be making the stream super huge and raising this whole area over here and destroying everything that's on it, you know, and that's, not saying that that is what the engineer is recommending, it's just saying the engineer is saying that might be what is required to, you know, remove this area from the floodplain.
Yeah, we, we have become, over the last, well, the last 10 years since the feasibility was approved, but the last three or four years since the Corps came back into our lives, we've all become not quite to the level of your professional education in the topic, but we've all become very acutely aware of the trade-offs that you have to make sometimes when you're dealing with these things, where it's one of these, or two of these, or 10 of these, or three of these, or how, how do you, how do you make those tough decisions sometimes? I, I've compared it to picking your favorite, favorite child sometimes, you know, you kind of have to go, this might be the option that's best. It's not the best, but it's the best that we have. Yeah, agree. Appreciate those comments.
Other questions for Mr. Engel? Okay. Well, I, I have a question for you, sir, and that would be, if we move forward with a, a motion, I don't have not-to-exceed amount on my motion.
You certainly, whoever makes the motion can wing it and say, in an amount not to exceed $42,590. It's a contracted amount, so.
That's a good number, 42,590?
Not, not to exceed the work ethic.
$50,000.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they had what they needed and so.
Yeah. If they want a dollar more, we'll just tell them, that's off.
That's it, that's off. Okay, all right. I would entertain a motion for that, then. Is it, Ms. Hands, were you looking to do that?
Yes, I, I'd be willing to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that the council approve a contract with HNTB to conduct a hydraulic analysis of Upper Turkey Creek in an amount not to exceed $42,590.
Do we have a motion, we have a second? Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caudal.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It looks like next item up would be consider a resolution setting a public hearing for June 16th. Are you handling that, too, Mr. Engel?
Yes, sir, I am. Next item on your agenda is consider a resolution setting a public hearing for June 16th to consider establishing a community improvement district. We'll jump right into exactly what that is. You got control, okay, I was about to say, that's not what I'm saying. What you have here is the unique makings of our Merriam North Marketplace development on the north side, Merriam Grand Station on the south. The red border around that is the border of a proposed community improvement district that we will jump into the details of here in a few seconds. The CID properties that would be in there would be all of the retail except for the hamburger and the donuts store. The reason for that, I'll just lead with, is that the individual that has a controlling interest on those two properties has a controlling interest on several of the other properties that we need to pull off the grocery store and the residential, and so this is the art of the deal. This is how we have to horse-trade to make this happen. But we will get into that a little bit more, but I wanted to lead with that that's where we are. So, but before we get into exactly the CID, I want to do a little bit of a high level of what the deal is itself at the Merriam North Marketplace. As the mayor mentioned, Shawnee Mission Post did a good job sharing some of that information. We've got the, the Star, we had the front page, I think, on last Thursday, so that information's starting to get out there, but we wanted to make sure that our residents got to hear it from us. We actually have some, some renderings that the public hasn't seen yet that we're pretty excited about. I would be remiss not to say that we have Ian Musman with Drake in the crowd. We've got Jacob Lowry with Kutech Rock, and we've got Jeff White with Columbia Capital over here. Sorry, I didn't mean to wake him up. The, but the, the, these are the folks that have really been instrumental, as well as staff, City Attorney Ryan Dink and Brian and Caitlin and Megan in pulling all of this off. This is not your normal deal, it is a unique deal, so I wanted to just kind of cover it at a high level. So, the property that we're talking about here is the two blocks on the northwest corner of Shawnee Mission Parkway in Antioch. You can see proximity to I-35. You can see that it is just to the north of Merriam Grand Station. If we zoom in on the next slide, we're talking about 6.25 acres approximately, straddles Slater Street there in the middle. We've got IKEA Drive, IKEA Way on the left. We've got 62nd Terrace on the north, Antioch on the east, Shawnee Mission Parkway on the south. When we talk about a unique deal and why we do a unique deal, you know, we have a tendency to go back to our survey. Why, why do we do the things we do? Why do we dare to be great? Well, we don't just do these things because we throw them against the wall and actually wonder if we, you know, what are we going to do next week? We actually are pretty strategic about the things that we do. We ask questions to our residents. We plan ahead, sometimes years ahead, and so we can ask these questions. This is from our last citizen, resident, citis, I'm sorry, Resident Satisfaction Survey. This is, question 16 and 17. 16, we just ask about indicate your level of agreement with the following statements. We ask about support for public art, which clearly tonight, you guys knocked it out of the park. Open burning, we still burn baby burn up Fire Department's dismay. Comp Plan 2040, are we going to do something downtown? We just, we're actually just made a motion on that, right? We're going to figure out some floodplain stuff. Should we implement a citywide contract? Guys crushed that last week. Next one is, Merriam should try to bring a grocery store to town even if it requires giving the store a multimillion-dollar incentive package. Then we asked the next question. We didn't ask stacked up against all priorities that the city could have. We just said the priorities that are listed there. We asked incentivize a grocery store. And we can see here by our results, it is the last one on there, but it's almost 60% strongly agree or agree that Merriam should try to bring a grocery store to town even if it requires giving that store multimillion-dollar incentive package. So, that's almost 60%. We've got about 20% there that are undecided. I think, once this all comes out, the details come out, I think we could probably win over half of that group, so we can hit that golden number of 66% of people that would support this. Again, we didn't ask if you just want a grocery store. We asked, we made sure people understood that we're talking about, if you want a grocery store in Merriam, because we're not a food desert, it's going to probably require multimillion-dollar incentive. And again, 60% of our enlightened residents said that that's what they agreed with, so. And then we asked how residents would prioritize those initiatives. It was the number-one thing. Of those initiatives, you've got over 50% that said it should be your highest or second-highest priority. So, of all the things that we ask, which we're doing something in every single one of these areas, this was the number-one thing that should be prioritized. These are the plans that have been seen. These were submitted by Drake a couple of weeks ago. This is what's gone through our planning commission. This is pretty dry, it's not very sexy. Thanks to Drake, I have some updated renderings I'm going to share with you right now. This is looking northwest. This is hovering over Merriam Grand Station. You can see the residential on the west side of Slater. You can see the grocery store. You can see the 4,000-square-foot restaurant east side of Slater. Next slide, please. This is looking northeast. Same look, just a little bit different. This is what it looks like if you're floating above the Visitors Bureau. Next one, I believe, is a close-up. This would be looking northeast. This is, Baron is to our left. This is IKEA Way. We are standing right above Shawnee Mission Parkway, so this is looking to the northwest, I'm sorry, northeast. The next pictures are northwest. This is standing on Slater and Shawnee Mission Parkway. You can see the Chipotle, that's the only thing that's going to stay at that site, as well as the addition of the residential. This is on Slater looking south, southwest, yeah, thank you, southwest. Residential Tower. Next one, this is standing on Antioch, also looking southwest. Residential tower. Next one, this is standing on Antioch, also looking southwest. You can see the grocery store. You can see the restaurant. You can't see Chipotle, but you can see the residential tower over there on the other side of it. This is looking to the southeast, looking at the grocery store. And then our last picture is looking to the southwest, hovering above, oh, I guess US Bank would be, but this is basically looking at the transformative nature of this intersection from what it looked like five years to go to what it potentially could look like five years from now. So excited to share these pictures and appreciate Drake sharing these with us, not to steal their thunder. Matt will be in attendance to make a formal presentation on this, but once I knew that he had these, I had to lean on him to steal them because I wanted to share them with you and share them with the public. So thank Drake for that. In order to pull this thing off, in the nature of this deal, we're going to have to get into the property ownership business. The way that the, this project has evolved over about the last year has kind of morphed and put us in a development type of phase as developers in terms of the things that we would be willing to do to get what we want. And clearly, we've shared what we believe our residents want, which is a grocery store. We'd love to develop that. We want more residents. We want density. All of the things that we say that we want in our comp plans and our, our smaller plans that get adopted in the comp plan, we're able to accomplish the majority of those. But in order to pull that off, the nature of this deal is we're going to have to get into the property ownership business. So the east block will be city-owned. The east block is going to be the grocery store and the residential, I'm sorry, the grocery store and the restaurant. East block construction estimate is about eighteen million dollars. That includes some shared site work that it's hard to, to extract what exactly, when you're redoing Slater Street, who does it benefit? Does it benefit the west block? Does it benefit the east block? There's site work that's going to be mutually beneficial. So we're estimating about, and these are estimates, want to be very, very clear, this is best available numbers, but we're not going to have these till we go out to bid. But these are working numbers, meaning that these get refined on a regular basis. We take these and check them against the market. We make sure that these are numbers that are pretty doggone close to what we believe they're going to end up being. But don't get hung up exactly on the number because they're subject to change and they're rounded. But in terms of a pro forma for the east block, you're looking at about eighteen million dollars to construct it. Annual grocery rent, once stabilized, about year three would be about three hundred thousand dollars a year that would go to the city as the owner. Hundred fifty thousand dollar annual restaurant. We do not have a restaurant or restaurants, but that's about ballpark for four thousand square foot, we're estimating. Based on that information, you've got a hypothetical value, because it's always going to be hypothetical till it goes out to the market, of about seven point seven million dollar east block. What that is, is that means that like we invest in treasuries and we have assets that we invest in, we are now going to be potentially the proud owners of a grocery store and a restaurant. That is an asset that we, it's an equity. We can liquidate it when we want to. We can end up using that money for some other purpose. We can use it to pay off debt. We can use it for whatever we want, whenever we decide it makes financial sense. But if we are to own this for about five to seven years, it likely makes sense. Not only do our residents get a grocery store, we get a revenue stream of sales tax. We get a revenue stream of property tax that between us and Drake, we have brought to the community, right? Drake has done a lot of legwork. We will be the owners of this. We will sell this at some point in time, because I can't imagine we'll own it forever, although we could. It would be our option to do so. When we sell it, we will have the complete control over how that asset accrues because if we continue to invest and make that intersection a desirable place to be, those property values will continue to go up. So when we go out to market to sell whatever's on the east block, we will have been really the controlling party of how that property accrues. So west block, this will be the Drake block, Drake owned block, so this will be the residential and the Chipotle. Chipotle, the only thing that's staying, so it's really the residential. West block incentives for, and these are estimates, again, the only TIF for this project that is going to Drake is for the parking structure. That's thirteen point seven million dollars, so that will be a TIF to Drake. We also have some site work cost of about four point four million dollars, site acquisition cost of six point seven IRBs. So there will be a sales tax IRB, which is sales tax exemption on materials for construction. There will be property tax IRBs, which is property tax exemption. Drake has agreed to pay all of our taxing partners at the twenty-twenty-four appraisal, assessed valuation level, which on the west block actually is, is a bonus because the west block, because it's in the TIF, is paying at the base level. So that's an immediate increase with those pilot payments from what they're having, so we're very thankful of that. So we're estimating the incentives for Drake to be about thirty million dollars. Again, don't hold us to those numbers because until we know what the sales tax is and the property taxes, there's a lot of moving pieces in here. But for scope and scale, orders of magnitude, we're talking about similar to Merriam Grand Station with grocery store and two hundred and eighteen more apartments. So the city financing, how is the city going to pull off their, their portion of the deal? East block and west block costs that we need to come up with, we've got fourteen something million dollars for the project costs, five million for utility undergrounding. Now, that's money that we're going to borrow, but that's already sunk cost. They're already doing that work. That's already in, that was in the twenty-twenty-four CIP, got carried over to twenty-twenty-five. We have not paid them yet, so we're going to, we're suggesting that we bond that money so it frees up cash flow. So we can put that into the project and we can actually enhance some of that utility undergrounding on the north side. We've got seven million dollars in site work, and then we've got about five point seven million dollars in land acquisition. So we need to come up with about thirty-one million dollars. Again, don't hold us to that exact number, but that's order of magnitude. City's going to borrow those because we're going to issue geo bonds. How are we going to pay back those geo bonds? The biggest one's going to be our I-35 TIF. That's the economic powerhouse of our economic development toolbox. We would anticipate that adding about five years to the term of the TIF will produce enough money to cover the TIF portion of our debt. What we're here to talk about tonight, actually, is the CID. So a one percent CID on those businesses that I showed on the map, and we'll show on the map again here in a few. Again, a one percent CID, most of those are restaurants. Fifty dollar bill, it's fifty cents. So that's, that's ballpark, going to pick up the second largest chunk of what our debt payment will be. And then we've got grocery rents and restaurant rents. I think the most important thing to point out, and this was very clear from the beginning, we made it very clear from the beginning internally for our team, is that what we wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that all of these financial modeling occurred within the statutorily approved economic development revenue streams that are, that are allowed to us by state statute. We did not want any of this economic development to compete with general fund, i.e. service levels. I didn't want to have to come back to you in five years and say, we can't do this, or we have to raise taxes, or we can't lower taxes, or we, the chief needs another police officer and we can't afford it, or whatever it is, because we need general fund dollars to cover economic development. That is not how we have modeled this. We have modeled this to be very conservative and to stay within those economic development revenue streams, so pretty proud of that. And it doesn't mess with the sales tax. The sales tax that generated on this site also will benefit the general fund. So we're not going to need, we, we, we will not have to give up those sales tax dollars to pay for economic development because, again, we invite in hundreds of new residents, thousands of new customers to our grocery store and our restaurant, and we will surely have some sort of draw on service levels, call for service, things like that. We want to make sure that we have money to pay for those things. That's why we grow the pie. So back on track, why are we here tonight? Approve a resolution setting a public hearing for June sixteenth to consider the establishment of a community improvement district. I am not asking you to approve a CID tonight. What I'm asking you to approve is simply a resolution to have a public hearing so that the public can come in and they can share their opinions about CID or this project as a whole. Before I jump back in that, since I'm back on track, I wanted to go over some Community Improvement District 101, just to take everybody kind of back to what community improvement districts are. A community improvement district is approved by Kansas State statute. It's essentially an additional sales tax at the point of sale within the established district per our CID policy that you approved in November. If we have a CID, it has to be conspicuously noticed, publicly noticed within each of those places that have a CID before the point of sale, so the people that are in the CID will know that they will have an additional point of sale, sales tax for that CID. Unlike TIF, which can pay for parking structures or vertical, or dirt work, property acquisition, curb, utilities, things like that, with CID, you can pretty, all structure costs you can reimburse for. Also, site improvements or enhancements, greenscape, streetscape, art, ongoing operation expenses. CID is very, very broad. It can pay for anything. That's why CID is kind of the growing economic development tool that's being used. CID pay-as-you-go, so essentially how this will work mechanically, additional sales tax collected at the point of sale, special sales tax ends up in a segregated account with the city. Once we, once we have a allowable expense, then we can reimburse those funds. We will hold them. They don't go anywhere. They're actually nearing to us. They're ours, so we don't actually have to give them to someone. We just have to have the documentation. And then only funds as they're available are, we can't forward, you know, we can't borrow against this, we, only the funds that are available can go towards the debt service. So this is just an illustration. You've got your regular sales tax, nine point four-seven-five, which is the normal distribution. The state of Kansas would pull their six point five. The county pulls their one point four-seven-five. We pull our one point five. For those keeping score at home, the only debt we have gets expired in twenty-twenty-seven, and that's our community center. And we have a sales, a quarter cent sales tax, so point two-five that funds that sale, that, that, that sales tax that funds that debt, that will disappear. So that number will go down on, at the end of twenty-seven. Then up to an additional two percent can go to, can go to reimburse allowable expenses. Again, statutorily, we can go to two percent. We could ask for two percent. We're not, we're asking for one percent. And more, and more importantly, that second line up there, there's no CID on the grocery store. We heard that loud and clear from the council. We didn't think that it would be, it sends mixed messages to say, look, we've got a grocery store, but we're going to put this on your groceries. People certainly can choose to eat or shop at some of the retail areas within the CID, but we all need groceries. The council has spoken very loudly about that and clearly, so again, but by not having the grocery store in the CID, that means we need one percent versus half percent. We need maybe more years than we need less years, but again, it's to the benefit of the district. So all CID sales tax go to us and they will pay back eligible cost. We anticipate the eligible cost being the debt service on geo bonds that we're going to issue in the commensurate amount to cover the debt within the CID. Again, here is the map. So your CID properties are going to be Chipotle, your new restaurant or restaurants against four thousand square foot. We don't know if it's going to be one or two. Could be two, could be one. It won't be a drive-through, though. Kava, Starbucks, Jersey Mike's, Treats Unleashed, Supplement Superstore, Thirty Hop, Homegrown, Shake Shack, and Denny's will all be in that one percent CID district to benefit the residents by allowing us to construct a grocery store and a restaurant. That being said, when we talk about the uniqueness of this deal and why we would do a deal like this, keep coming back to our residents really, really want a grocery store, and we told them what it takes to get a grocery store, and you're more than welcome to read into that however you'd like. So that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about passing a resolution tonight setting June sixteenth for a public hearing to then consider the establishment of a CID. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Engel? Any questions? Let's wait for Mr. Engel. I guess you must have explained it really well. Well, I would entertain a motion for that resolution.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hands, go ahead.
I move that the council approve a resolution setting a public hearing for June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five to consider the establishment of a community improvement district.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second? Ms. Yodrich?
Mr. Mayor, second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Motion passes eight-zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Looks like next item up would be the CIP update. Director Campke coming to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The May CIP update is in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. I did want to point out the Gabian Basket Repair Project. If you have, if you haven't looked at the pictures I've attached, be sure you do that because we're really proud of that project. We have some before and after pictures, and there's a world of difference. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, my question would be, in the event, is there, if, and I don't think there will, but in the event that there's a failure in that system that they put in, is there any warranty work on it will stand up for so many years, or how's that work?
Yes, there's a two-year maintenance, performance and maintenance bond, so we'll go back and inspect it right before the two-year. And if there's any issues at that point, or any time before then, then they will be on the hook to make those repairs.
Thank you. Any other questions, Director Campke? Alright.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Alright, looks like next item up is a single hauler update. Looks like we have Ms. Guard.
Hello, good evening. We have been giving these updates to you at each council meeting going through the process so far. Now that we've kind of jumped through the largest hurdle that we've had, we've felt maybe to roll that back a little bit and give you monthly updates. So this will be your May update for where we're at with the single hauler process. We have been working on a postcard to communicate with the public exactly the actions that have been taken, directing them to that webpage that has the frequently asked questions on it, that I continue to update as I get questions. That's a very easy tool to be able to communicate with the public, and so if you do get questions that you don't know the answers to, please direct people to that webpage, merriam.org backslash trash service. And if you do have questions that aren't on that page, please let me know. I'd be happy to update it. We are continuing to work through logistics with GFL, specifically regarding the contract and any details that we're going to need to communicate with the public, probably more into next year. But we are working on having Single Hauler be the headline for the Winter Highlights magazine. So we're hoping to have a bunch of the answers that we don't have available for that magazine, which will be for us in the fall, we'll be working on it this fall. GFL's familiar with that, and they are totally open to that timeline and are happy to help us communicate. There are going to be additional council action items that need to be taken, including the approval of that contract with GFL. You will also be asked to consider a contract with Mark, which is actually the contract with GFL. You're just going to have to assign it to GFL. It's, I'll explain the logistics when that has to happen, but Mark is working through that right now. The other communities that are also on that contract are working through their contract renewals as well. So once those happen, we'll have a more updated contract for you all to consider. So in addition to those two items, you will all, so will be asked during this budget process to establish a new solid waste fund so we can best manage this program, not straight out of the general fund, but we can keep a better eye on expenses to the contract and to our personnel as well. Also, the income from the residents, once we put that specialist assessment on the property tax bill. I believe it is also a council action to establish a special assessment, but I'm working with the county as far as what that process looks like. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Guard? I see no questions.
Thank you.
For the update? Okay, well, that, we have informational items of the Park and Recreation Advisory Board that was in your package. Is, unless anybody has any questions for Director Slocum? No, okay. Mr. Engel, do you have anything from staff?
The only thing I have is I visited Thirty Hop five of the first ten days. They were open. I, I did not drink every single time I was there, but it was fantastic. Friday at dinnertime, not an open seat in there. There were kids playing in the back, rolling around on the grass, people sitting in the chairs out back. It was exactly the, what you would hope it would be back in that Civic Plaza. I took pictures. I asked the parents if I could take pictures of their kids rolling around with their shoes off because they were having such a good time waiting for seating. It's, it's fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to get over there, I would highly recommend not just Thirty Hop, but the Civic area back behind, which is open to public. Happy to answer any questions other than that.
Ms. Chaveta.
I can concur. Saturday night, it was the exact same, and I actually ran into Matt Pennington and his family while I was there.
Yeah, it was, it's fantastic.
They were like on a forty-five minute wait, and I mean, it was awesome, though, you know, they were great. So it's exciting to have that.
Yes, Ms. Yodrich.
I will say, I went for Mother's Day last night, and I made a reservation, so do that. I wanted to mention, were you done? Because I wanted, I wanted us to not forget that Turkey Creek Festival is Saturday, right?
It is.
So go to that, please. It's going to be fun for all ages.
Okay, good catch. Thank you. Yeah, and I tried, I attempted on Sunday at Mother's Day to make a reservation two hours in advance for the church ladies, like, go out to lunch, but was not successful. But, okay, I've eaten there, and I concur with everything you've said. Okay, my understanding is we do have an executive session, a couple of executive sessions this evening.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the first one is an executive session to discuss personnel matters, and I would entertain a motion for that. Ms. Hands?
And I'd be happy to make it. I move that the governing body recess into executive session to discuss the city administrator's annual performance review pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B one, which allows the governing body to hold an executive session to discuss personal matters of non-elected personnel. Present will be the governing body and city attorney. And the meeting will reconvene in the council chambers at 8:30. The mayor has asked for 20 minutes.
Ms. Chaveta.
A second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozemeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, so it's my understanding that we actually have another executive session and I would entertain a motion for that one. Ms. Hands.
And Mr. Mayor, I move that the governing body recess into executive session pursuant to KSA 7543 19B2 for consultation with legal counsel on matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship related to a potential development project. Present will be the governing body, city attorney, city administrator, assistant city administrator, community development director, finance director, tourism and economic development manager, bond counsel, and the city's financial advisor. The meeting will reconvene in the council chambers at 9:00 PM.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Chaveta.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, we have a motion, a second.
Councilmember Ryder.
Aye.
Councilmember Silvers.
Aye.
Councilmember Yodrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Chaveta.
Aye.
Councilmember Cozemeyer.
Aye.
Councilmember Hands.
Aye.
Councilmember Caldwell.
Aye.
Councilmember Leahy.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
We have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.